Yeah.
I put on a sweater over my black T-shirt.
There you go.
So that's dressing up for me.
Yeah.
I have to say from, uh, it was one of the better virtual events that I've been to since, uh.
We, we, we had a couple of practices before we did that one. So.
It was really.
I'm glad we did because the first, our first practice didn't go so well, but we were polished.
All right. I think it's five o'clock. Is everybody ready? Peggy, are you ready?
Okay.
All right. So it is Monday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty is five P M. So, um, this is the Village of Oregon Village Board Meeting, and this is also our public hearing for the twenty twenty-one annual budget. Uh, so Peggy, do you want to do a roll call, please?
Jacobson. Bollig.
Bollig is here.
Peterson.
Here.
Horton.
Here.
Glish.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Stitch.
Here.
Thank you. All right. First thing on our agenda is community input. Uh, so this part of the agenda allows for anyone from the community who would like to address the board about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Um, we'd be happy to listen to you and ask any clarifying questions, but we can't take any action. Um, but we can't put things on future board agendas. So is there anyone, um, from the community who would like to, uh, speak up now or bring something to our attention? All right. That seems like a no. So we will keep going, uh, to item four, public appearances. Uh, item A. So we have that the information will be available at the board meeting. We have a discussion with the elders regarding the initial analysis of Lake Stone's tax increment finance, which is, um, also the TIF request for their Janesville Street Affordable Housing Project. Um, and we do have possible board action and we may decide to go into closed session at the end of the meeting to further discuss the TIF request. All right. So do you have anything that you want to put on the screen now, Mike?
I think I'll, I'll have Elise bring up the item from elders if she would. And I, and Donna and David from elders are both here to go through this with us tonight.
Okay.
And I, I sent it to Brett also, but I don't see, is Brett, I don't see Brett on the call, is he?
He actually just got on the call, Mike.
Oh, he just got on? Oh, good. Okay.
Seven seconds ago.
Good timing then. Good. Okay. So, so Dawn, I guess you're going to do this, right, tonight? Go through this?
Yeah.
Right. I'll, I'll go through it and hopefully if there's questions, I can answer, um, the questions. You know, Frank is, is out of the office, um, on a vacation. So unfortunately couldn't be with us this evening, but he received information from the developer on the project, which included their sources and, uh, of funding and their uses of fund and he, he also received projections for rental income and operating expenses to run, um, the development once it's been, uh, built out. And this is a, um, what's called a light tech development. So it's, it's receiving low income tax housing credits. Um, and as he explained in his, his analysis that those credits get sold to investors who use them to offset uh, income tax liabilities so that those sale of those credits creates equity into the project. And, um, there, these are, are lower to moderate income housing credits. So they're rented to families with the lower fifty to seventy percent, uh, of median income averages. So the housing rent rates are set much lower, the property assessed is out much lower, and the return on the, um, investment changes because of that. So what Frank has done is he's run the analysis with the, the income that he had, information he had received. And as far as that question of but for, um, he, he has determination is that without some assistance to provide, um, that funding source that goes into the application for this, these credit. This would not bring about anyone willing to invest in the project because the, the, um, returns wouldn't be, wouldn't, couldn't be supported without it. So the support that's provided for, for the TIF goes into the application that goes to WEDA, um, that approves the allowance for these tax credits. So, uh, the value of the TIF is, is meaningful when they submit this to, um, to WEDA to qualify for tax credits. So the developer in their request is they want a hundred percent of the return of the increment that they generate returned back to them. Um, and the, the vill- the village has, has given its direction that they, you would rather keep some of it to support other TIF projects within, uh, tax increment district number four, which is where this project is located. And so he first ran the analysis, uh, with that direction in mind, um, that the village is looking to keep, say, twenty-five percent of the increment generated and then seventy-five percent would go to, um, the development. And that does not recoup, um, their needed dollars over the remaining life of this district and therefore would not give them what they need for purposes of the, um, uh, the WEDA application. So he ran it in two other scenarios and he's attached those versions, um, in, in schedules as well. And one was, was providing a, um, a five percent retention and then paying a four percent interest on the, uh, MRO to the developer. And, um, while that still accomplishes things, uh, he, he decided to look at one more alternative. That's kind of more of a hybrid of the two. And that's his third version, which is gives the village a little bit more, uh, retention. And, um, gets the developer close to their request. Their request was two point seven five million. If the village retains, um, am I reading this right? Yes. If the village retains ten percent, the developer would get two point seven. So it's pretty close to the, the request they, they are requesting. And, um, in, in Frank's view and looking at this overall felt that that was kind of accomplishing somewhat of the objectives of both, um, you as the village and the developer in that you would retain some portion of the increment for other projects, not to the level of twenty-five percent. And the developer, while they wouldn't get a hundred percent of their increment, they would get close to that, um, and, and you know, meeting close to their overall objective as well. So, um, you know, Frank's got a lot of additional background that he reviewed to come up with these conclusions and, um, in looking at the rate of return on the projects, but I think in conclusion, that third version would probably be the one that, that comes closest to meeting both the villages and the developers', um, needs and goals in the project. So the XX increment and that third version that would be generated that the village would maintain, um, based upon the assumptions put into this would be about four hundred and eleven thousand. Um, and on a net PV basis, then the, uh, the, um, developer would, would also reach their needed goal for the upfront support to the project. And assuming they monetize this with the bank, get the cash from the bank and then can pay that loan back.
And Dawn, uh, on, on this example, there is no interest being paid on, on the MRO, right?
It's not. It's basically, this is what they would get in cash. It's, 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 it would be, uh, ninety percent of that increment they'd get in cash. And they'd have to absorb that carrying cost with that cash flow.
Versus the, the previous one where the village is only retaining five percent, then, then Frank is showing paying a four percent interest.
Right, right. Correct.
Okay. Make sure the board knew that. Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, board members, do we have questions for, for Dawn while she's here? On any of the information presented? Yeah, go ahead, Jerry. You're on, you're on mute though, Jerry.
Thank you. Um, Mike, how you, how does staff feel about this scenario?
Uh, so what, I mean, the ten percent?
Yeah.
I, I'm co- I'm comfortable with it. I, I understand. I, I think we realize this is a affordable housing project and, um, Frank did exactly what we asked him to do, which we're going to try to start these TIF projects, uh, going forward at twenty-five percent. And then we're going to try to see, you know, the sort of the sweet spot of what, what, what works for the village and what works for the developer. And, uh, so at some point I'd be interested to get Brett's opinion and reaction to the, to these, uh, scenarios as well.
Okay. And how would the administrative costs be covered?
The, yeah, the administrative expenses are, so you're, you're getting those as well. So the way this schedule works is that revenue stream is to the left, the amount that would go to the developers is identified there. The, um, ten percent retained by the village, you'd also get the administrative expenses in addition to that ten percent. And it still would, would, uh, then the other columns are the annual revenue over expenses. And then, uh, lastly is the cumulative. So you, you, you know, the first couple of years takes two years before the revenue from the development comes in. So Frank has got five thousand each of those years for administration. Well, you're not going to have any revenue coming in on this project. The good news is the TIF itself. There's other development out there. You have a fund balance the end of nineteen, so you could probably cover that ten thousand with, with funds on hand. And then once the generation of that revenue comes in, you're building up a fund balance and you, you maintain basically that fund balance on this project, uh, for the remaining life. So you're getting paid in addition to that ten percent, you're getting paid that administrative expense as well. So, so for example, um, in, uh, you know, you'd be, you'd be collecting more like thirty thousand that the village would maintain each year or more, thirty to thirty-five thousand versus just the ten percent. So it, it actually is a little better than ten percent in terms of what the village is going to get out of the, the cash flow.
Very good. And I see that, uh, the, the TIF closes in twenty thirty-six, which is in a reason, which is a reasonable time length, at least I feel. And, uh, is this, um, is this a pagel? I can't remember.
Yes. Yep.
That's, that's what I thought. So.
We clarified at the last meeting, hearing.
Okay, good. Cause that's the way I was hoping it would.
Yep.
And I was, I wasn't here last meeting, as you recall.
Yeah.
The, um, I think this is all very reasonable, but I, I wait to hear what everybody else thinks.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry. So Randy, go ahead.
So Mike, you kind of alluded to the question I was going to ask. And that, what, that is, have the developers seen these versions and do we know reactions or?
I, when I sent these out on Saturday morning to the, the board, I also sent it to Brett.
Okay.
And so I, so I, but I've not heard back from Brett. I, I think he must've been busy today. So, but I think, oh, at least he's on the call, so we can get.
Yeah. I have, it looks like Brett and Brian are both on the call. Do we want to hear from them now? Or do you, board members, you have more questions for Dawn? Uh, go ahead, Cory.
I have, uh, two questions. The first question is, is the four percent, is, is that the interest rate? Um, I guess, can you explain the four percent? Is that the developer's cost that, since that's not included? Or is that interest that, that we won't be charging on the municipal revenue obligation?
I think that's the cost that Frank received from the developer for their cost of monetizing the loan. Is I think what that four percent is. And that, I think.
That's typical. Yeah, that's typically what it is, Donnie. Right. Yep.
Yeah, the four percent is the developer's loan cost of funds and is consistent with the other deal that was done, um, earlier in the year. By.
But in option three, that's not included?
In option three, it's just basically a calculation of, at the end of the day, the payment is either principal and interest to make a payment or just a payment. And in the option three, it's, here's the payment. That's, that's what would come off of giving them a ten percent and, um, you know, that, that would have to work for the developer in terms of how their cash flow needs. And, and Frank, I think, has the, the debt payment. Let me pull up that third version. He has the debt payment of financing that tid, um, on an annual basis. And then this, this income coming in to offset that payment. Now, whether it's not an exact offset, um, on an annual basis, so, uh, but it, it builds into the cash flow for the developer's analysis or the performer. So again, um, you know, the developer is going to have to ultimately decide if this works for them as well. And then obviously this is a decision that works two ways. It's a two-way street here. But, uh, what I'm seeing on their payments is, um, if they monetize it, it's roughly two hundred and forty thousand and twenty-two and then two sixty-one each year after that.
Okay. My, my second question was related to the property. I'm assuming that the property purchase price is included in the project evaluation. And I guess, guess if so, is the commercial portion of the property excluded from this evaluation?
This is just on the residential buildings, Cory.
Okay. Just the buildings, no land?
Well, the, well, the, the, the increment that they're, that they're going to generate, because the land already has some value, but it does not have anything to do with commercial, with the commercial, uh, aspect of the project.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions for Dawn right now? All right. Brett and Brian, you guys are on the call. Do you have some reaction or thoughts to this?
Yeah, no, thank you, uh, for sending that over. Yeah, we, we did get that mic. Sorry, I didn't get back to you today. We're kind of running all over the place.
We're busy.
I think we're getting close. Um, as, as everybody knows, we're, we're trying to get to a point where this project works. Um, the, you know, one piece that, a couple of things, we, we have not discussed this with Baker Tilly, um, or a bank or an attorney yet. So, uh, we don't know if it does work. I feel like we're getting close. Um, but you know, the, the big things for us is we want to make sure we can pay that TIF loan back because we have to go get, you know, the loan and we've got to make sure we pay it back so that the, the piece about no interest, um, I just have to understand a little bit more. I understand what Frank did in terms of how much he put for the payments each year, but we just have to see what that works. And we don't know what a bank's going to loan us, um, a TIF loan for. So I think in actually in our assumption, we had five percent, um, because this is a fifteen-year period. I mean, I don't know how long.
And Frank does have that loan count, your payment loan calculated at five percent.
He does. Okay. So I guess I don't know what that additional four percent would have been.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, if you took the principal and interest, for example, in twenty twenty-three, that would be two hundred and ten thousand two thirty-two versus the two hundred. So each year it's going to be a little different. But again, that's partially because that's a five percent. I mean, I think it could have been calculated either way. It's just, this is the dollar amount that would be available for payment, whether it's split up between a principal and interest payment or just a pure, um.
Right. Okay.
Your payment. If that makes any sense. Yeah. And as far as, I'm sure Frank would be more than happy to share what he's put together that takes your sources and uses and takes your rental incomes and all of that analysis. That's not in the packet, but I, I, you know, so I, um, but he'll be back in the office, uh, next Monday, and I'm sure can share all of those details with you.
True. I guess the other component for us too is there's, there's a lot of unknowns and variables. We've all heard about construction costs going crazy and we're trying to make some assumptions and construction really won't start for six months and we start cutting some of the things right out of the gate. It's a little concerning. I mean, we, we, we approach this with a realistic point of view. And, uh, again, I think Brett's right on the money. We, we want to talk to some of our professionals before we, uh, we agree. I, I think we're, we're getting real close, but these, this last little bit can mean a lot. So it's, it's, um, looking at all the formulas and models one more time and kind of seeing where things lie.
Um, Mike, do we, do we want to wait to take any action until perhaps, uh, Brett and Brian have a chance to talk to their team? Or I, I don't know, any proposal that we would put on a team? I'm not sure.
Yeah. Um, well, we are.
I guess maybe the board could, we could develop some sort, if we want to decide if we need to retain a certain amount, right?
Right. Um, sort of as a side note, or it's really, obviously it's related. We're trying to get this done by the end of the year. So, uh, Brett and Brian can, uh, submit a WEDA grant for the beginning of next year. So, um, I guess at the, if the board, I guess, let me get Matt's opinion on this. Matt, if the board in general i- is okay with what we're doing here and, um, I, I hate to waste two weeks here before we have our next board meeting. The, you know, could we get authority to, to work with Brett and Brian to even prepare the, the TIF agreement, uh, to keep this thing moving ahead?
You could, uh, if the board wants to authorize that. I guess, I, I think the question is, you know, back to whether we have, um, whether we have enough information to know that it makes sense to start that work. I mean, do we?
Right.
I mean, I heard Brett say, you know, he, he thinks we're close, but he's not sure we're there yet. Um, I guess the question is, do we know enough so that it makes sense to get started on that? Or is there, are we, are we possibly in a position where the numbers just aren't going to, going to make it? And I don't know the answer to that.
I think we are close. I just, you know, when we say, if the, you know, the board put to a vote that, you know, he needed the ten percent payback and, you know, it can only give you a two, six, five or two, seven, that would concern me a little bit. Um, I mean, even, even if the board would say, hey, we're agreeing to a nine percent retention. I think that would give us a little wiggle room. Maybe we can get to the ten percent. I just don't know until we vet these over the next couple of days. Um, so I agree with Mike. It'd be great to, um, keep this thing moving.
Hmm.
Uh, if there's a way, I just, um, I'm not sure exactly how you do that.
Well, I mean, I can, if, if I'm given the green light to start working on it, I can start working on it. And, you know, if we, i- if there's a little, uh, variation that has to be addressed, uh, over the next two weeks to accommodate, you know, potential changes, uh, obviously we're going to have to bring something back to the village board at some point. And we'll see what they, I, I don't know if the board's going to be in a position tonight to make a decision on the ten percent retained issue or the interest issue. I don't know that they're in a position to make that kind of decision tonight, but, um, i- i- if, again, if the parties, if the village and Brett, your team feels like, you know, you're close enough to get started on working on it, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're very close. It's just, um, I think we're just a tad hesitant not being able to discuss it fully with our team, but we're close enough where, um, you know, if we can get our attorney working with you, Matt, um, and started on that, it'd be great to, to not, um, waste these next couple of weeks.
You know, Jeannie at the poll, sorry.
Go ahead, Cory. So. Go ahead, Mike. And then I think it's both Amanda and Cory. So why don't you finish your thought?
So I, I think that if the board is in general is okay with, you know, somewhere between ten percent or five percent or whatever, and you just give us some flexibility to work with, with them. Um, you know, we, we could, uh, get some of the work done over the next couple of weeks versus bringing it back to the December, December seventh meeting and then having to really quickly try to get it turned around for the last meeting in December. So.
I mean, I, I'd be willing just to vote to give you flexibility to work on it. I, I don't really know if we need to stock percentages, but others might think differently. Amanda, did, did you have something to add?
Yeah, well, I was going to say, um, you know, we could say just to get the ball rolling, give a percentage or, or, or just say we give you flexibility to work on it. And, uh, I mean, I don't know, everything's going to be virtual anyway. I'm not averse to having another meeting next Monday, like in between our regular meetings, just for this topic. It wouldn't take that long. I mean, and wherever we are, if we're traveling or not over the holidays, we just jump on virtually and I don't know what, I don't want to speak for other board members though, but I don't have a problem with meeting in between if we need to.
Okay. Cory, did you have a, a question or a thought?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, how was the, the closure year of twenty thirty-six decided? Because it seems to me if we had a longer expenditure period, we'd have more flexibility.
Your, your district, like, statue closes in twenty thirty-six.
Okay.
I, I think we've been talking among staff about potentially at some point trying to extend it a couple of years, but we, we, we don't know that for sure, Cory. So, so that's, that's when we have to close the TIF.
Go ahead, Randy.
So Mike, is the, or anybody, the, the five percent share, is it basically half of this four, four eleven? Or is, what is, what is the five percent share, village share?
Yeah.
Do we have that?
Oh, I, oh, you went from five percent. Oh, I know.
Just want to, want to know what the five percent would be.
At five percent, the village's share is two hundred and five. So roughly, yeah.
After that. Okay. Thank you.
I, I think I like, oh, sorry.
I was going to say, and my, and my, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, the reason that we want to retain some of that money is because we then, we, we put that money towards the TIF, towards improving roads, infrastructure, correct?
The whole idea is we try to get some of these TIFs to start paying for themselves and get it off the general levy, correct?
Right. Okay.
Yep. But, but also, oh, sorry.
I, I just want the general public to not think that we're just collecting a fee off the top to like putting the coppers. It, it actually, it goes, it goes towards projects in that, in that tid, that, that district.
For example, the five thousand dollars that we may collect, rather than, rather than having to levy for that and, you know, to the general, general levy, there'd be increment, uh, generating that money. So as an example, that keeps the tax dollars down, tax levy. I, I was just going to say, Jeannie, I'd certainly like generally speaking, your approach, just to give us a little flexibility to work with Brett and Brian. We've been doing this for a while with, but then we've done a couple of projects with them now and, and I think we can, I think we can strike, I think we can strike a deal that they, they have to be able to live with and we can live with as well. I think, I think we can do that. And we, you know, and, and Amanda's right, if we have to, we can call a special meeting, but I'm hoping that we can just do something over the next week or two and bring something back on December seventh.
I mean, and obviously anything that you decide still comes back to us.
Absolutely. That's approved the agreement. Yep.
Right. This just allows you guys to keep looking, negotiating. Does anybody in the board have a problem with that?
No.
Do you need a motion to that effect, Mike? Or just keep working?
Matt, what do you think, man?
We don't have, no, I mean, if the board, based on what I've heard already, uh, unless somebody on the board has an objection, uh, to the idea that we're, that we're moving forward with some potential uncertainty on this ten percent issue, for example, uh, then I, I don't think you have to, you know, if somebody, somebody wants, if somebody would rather we not get started on it, please speak up. Otherwise, I don't think we need a motion.
Yeah.
So just.
Oh, go ahead, Randy.
So Mike, just to clarify, and so you, you guys would work something at some, somewhere between five and ten? Is that kind of what you were looking at or?
Well, I, I think we, this is Matt. I, I, I don't think we know yet. I think that Brett, Brett's team, they still have to dig into the numbers more. They, they, they haven't really had a chance to vet this thoroughly on their end. So I think the first step would be they need a little time to really dig into this on their end. And then they need to come back and tell us, can they make it work at ten percent? Great. If not, w- tell us what, what they think works and then we're going to have to react to that. And so that, I, I think that's what the process looks like.
That's fine.
Yeah.
All right. Does that sound okay with board members? I'm not seeing any. Okay. All right, Mike. I think then that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you to Dawn and David for being on the call.
You're very welcome.
And we, and we will not, and we will not need closed session, obviously, at the end of the meeting. So.
Yeah. So the, the board and our public watching knows this. I, I hate closed session. So anything that we can do is open session.
Yeah.
We will do an open session. Yeah. I just, I feel like people need to know what we're talking about and how we feel and how we vote.
Yeah.
All right. Excellent. So, hey, we avoided the closed session. Score. So thank you, Brett and Brian. Keep working on numbers and, uh, we'll look forward to talking to you again.
That sounds good. I appreciate it. Michael and Matt will be in touch hopefully in the next couple of days.
Okay, sounds good.
Maybe we can jump on a, another Zoom call to go through, uh, some feedback.
Those. Yep.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right. So then we will keep on chugging here for B. Uh, this is a discussion with Sleep Inn Hotel representatives regarding suspending the room tax payment. This is a discussion with Sleep Inn Hotel Representatives regarding suspending the room tax payments for the Sleep Inn Hotel due to COVID-19 pandemic for a specific period of time, and to discuss a request to use previously paid room taxes for targeted advertising. So we have some information in the packet on this.
And I see Paul Harms on the call. So I've been, I talked to Paul about this a few times and I'll let him maybe explain what he, what they're asking for, Jeannie.
Sure, yeah, Paul, do you, the floor is yours, welcome.
Thank you. And we've got Dan Egan, I believe Danny, Dan's on the call from SNL.
Yes, I'm here too, yep.
Good. So Dan, you want to kind of start off?
Yeah, I'll start it off. Yeah, as you guys can see from the email that I had sent Mike, was just kind of a follow-up with Paul and his conversation that the hotel in this pandemic is struggling greatly. And as the manager, we're getting pressure from the majority owners to rectify the situation ASAP and look at alternative sources of revenue, cutting of expenses. Otherwise, their, their recommendation, their wants is if we can't make a change now to close the hotel until there's a cure for this virus and until the housing market comes back. As the hotel and as the manager of the hotel and the management company, we obviously do not want that to happen. So Paul Harms and SNL Hospitality have been looking at a variety of different things. And one thing that I had brought up is what about this occupancy tax, the rooms tax that we pay the village? Is there a way we can use some of the funds that have already been paid to support some new advertising, to try and bring people into the Village of Oregon? And, and then also if we could suspend the taxes that like we were requesting. I think I put on there the third quarter tax that I filed the return for, but I have not had it, have not had the funds to pay it quite yet. I mean, it was $11,696. Third quarter, I mean, fourth quarter, we're estimating to be maybe $9,000. I'm just trying to bring up my cash flow sheet real quick. Um. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, but just under $9,500 is what we're assuming or, or calculating would be collected for the fourth quarter, really first and second quarter of next year. We don't have a good forecast available right now, just because everything changes with this pandemic, kind of on a daily basis. You know, in, in the email, I put that Oregon Community Bank is trying to work with us. They suspended all principal payments, or they had, sorry, suspended all principal payments. The last couple of months, those have kicked back in, but now we're reworking with the bank again to get principles suspended, hopefully until May of 2021. But the hotel would still be responsible for the interest on the loan. So, you know, we're, and I know we've put in quite a bit of money via the, the room or occupancy tax to the village in the past. And, and one of my questions was to Adam Coyle, who was one of the owners, who's also on the Village occupancy board. It was, how have these funds been used or have they been used? And we don't really need to go into that right now, because I do not have an answer to that. Well, we, that's why we were trying to say, well, there's gotta be money left in there that we could hopefully use for these different advertising campaigns to help booster revenues in this fourth quarter, first quarter of next year and second quarter. I know that Adam Coyle had said that the village board wants to be able to put numbers to the cost. So if we spent X number of dollars, how many room nights did it bring in? How much revenue did it generate? And, and you know, that's really something that with these campaigns, we won't be able to tell you ahead of time. It's more of just targeted campaigns to the general public, if you will. And it'd be reportedly we have to generate after the fact. Excuse me, one of the campaigns would be just local boosting via Facebook, just boosting some ads there. We actually had our Director of Sales put together a marketing packet like they had done for Port Washington, Wisconsin. That's one where we have another hotel and they worked with their Chamber and the Chambers website and putting together some direct marketing via them, some eBlast and direct marketing via the, mentioned the Visitors Bureau, digital marketing that they could do. And some, one of her things was collaboration with Destination Madison, getting Village on this side or the Bridge Tourism Board to have that collaboration with Destination Madison to try and bring in other sources of revenue or room nights into the, into the village. So what you have up is our, our shortage of revenues versus where we thought we'd be this year. It's almost $700,000 since March that we are down in budgeted revenues. The hotel, sorry, the hotel opened, Paul, was it early 2018 or 2019? I can't remember for some reason.
Yeah, it was December 31st of 2018.
Okay, so last year was our first open year. We're down from revenues from our beginning revenue, our beginning year to the tune of $300,000 just from last year alone. And usually those hotels have a two to three year ramp up period. So we should have been seeing substantial growth in our second year of being open. And due to the pandemic, we have seen a drastic reduction of revenues. And so the hotel is, in short, just really hurting revenue wise. I mean, we are losing money just operating. The hotel not including any taxes or insurance or interest or principal. We are just, with the lack of room nights, are losing money on a daily basis just to keep the doors open, which is why the majority owners have discussed closing the hotel until February, March, April, May of next year to cut off those sustained losses. Paul, did you wanna talk a little bit about your, your forecast that you see over the next three to four months?
Yeah, so to Dan's point, this summer was actually okay for us. So June, July, and August wasn't terrible. We had quite a bit of construction business coming into the hotel, just with all the construction going on. It would have been really good if we would have been fully open with the weddings that we had on the books. But looking at just, you know, October, November, December, we were anticipating revenues from, you know, wedding venues, kind of reopening back up again. We were anticipating revenues from, whether it's, you know, travelers coming in to visit, family members for the holidays, actually quite a bit of revenue compared to last year, what we did with that, you know, those families coming in to visit the relatives. But with, you know, COVID really kind of ramping up a little bit, I think, you know, a lot of families are less than, a little more reluctant to, to have those, those, those meals and those get togethers. And so we're just kinda seeing a significant drop off in cancellations. Those weddings have really all canceled out going into, you know, February, March of next year. So really, our, you know, base business, business of what we have in the books is typically during the week, it's, you know, 10, 11, 12 rooms a night. And then, you know, maybe a few more rooms on the weekends with, you know, families coming in, visiting events. Or, you know, we're fortunate that we're working with the ice arena as well. So we've got their hockey teams coming in that are visiting and they're staying with us, but their rate is really reduced. So we just, we just don't have the revenues coming in like we had expected. So it's kinda where we're at right now.
To tie in, Paul said with the ice arena, Paul, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we were paying a trade-off with them for sponsorship to get these rooms to stay in-house. And it's a reduced rate for that. So that's when we're at least not having cash going out the door. But, you know, what could have been like a hundred and $10 room is probably around like $60 just to try and get business into the hotel, to undermine any other local-ish hotels. We had to, you know, keep the rate lower for that. And really, we were just trying to explore any and all options. One of the things that I had put in there was marketing and covering the booking costs of the hotel on discount travel websites. What that is talking about is like, both hotel sites like Priceline.com or Hotwire.com, where you see like the $40, $50 or $60 rates. And people pay that, but what we end up seeing, if we do that, and we haven't done that, because there, there's such a high commission, if it's a $60 rate, we might get $40 in the cost to turn a room with utilities is 35 or so dollars. So you're talking, you're potentially making $5 a room, where if you went to Choice Hotel, the same room, the same night, would have been $89.99 or higher, depending on the weekend, where we just pay a small like 5% commission or franchise fee on that. So there's really no additional cost to put the rooms on these discounted sites upfront, but we're just getting a completely reduced revenue. And that's why we were trying to say, well, if, if we could use some of the, the occupancy tax to cover that high commission, then it would be something that we, and the owners would be willing to do, even if we're getting $30, if you bring back in the, the 30% of it, it might make it where we're actually breaking even to rent those rooms.
All right, I think we, I think we got our picture, gentlemen. Board members, comments, questions? At this point, yes, go ahead, Randy.
So, so gentlemen, I just have a question on the, the second part, the asking to use previously paid taxes to the village. What, what is that amount? Do we know what that amount is that you're, are you wanting to pay everything you've paid so far or?
No, I mean, we are just talking very specific things. I can, I'm just, bear with me, I gotta bring it up on my computer.
How much are you talking about there? And you've paid it to us, do we still have it? And?
Mike can answer that.
Yep. So, so Lisa, again, I figured that was gonna be asked, so Lisa, give me a little cheat sheet. And Lisa, jump in if I explain this wrong. So, so they have paid $85,704 in room tax, $59,000, almost $60,000 that has gone to the Tourism Commission, because it's a 70, 30% split.
Yeah.
So we, we've kept $25,000. We had to pay the advance back that we, we spent to, to actually create the room tax ordinance and everything. And then we're using 18 of that for our 21 budget, which leaves us about a $5,000 balance. So it's the, the Tourism Commission has the money. And to answer Dan's question about what, what that money has been spent on, we had just last March, Dan came up with the grant program and, and then COVID hit. So none of that, the commissionally hasn't been any of that money at this point.
Okay, Mike, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from board members or thoughts? How about Jerry and then Corey and then Amanda?
Yeah, my opinion is we definitely wanna do everything we can to keep this hotel viable. And if the rest of the board recalls, we split this room tax between the village and the tourism board. The village gets 30%, tourism gets 70%. So it, I think it's a logical step in assuring the viability of the hotel to, to do this. And Mike, did I understand you correctly to say that first quarter is something gonna be about $5,000? Is that the number you threw out there?
I think, I think, I think Dan was saying.
We have about $9,500 is what we would collect in the fourth quarter, which would be paid in January of 2021.
Yep.
Okay. So, so in total, how much of a, of, I'm gonna call it a grant, for lack of a better word. How much of a grant are we talking about?
Look, this is Matt. Can, can I weigh in on this briefly? Because this, this gets a little complicated. I, I think there are kind of several different categories of, of dollars that we're talking about. One category, and I don't know that it's been touched on much yet, is, I, I believe there, there is a request that the village board adopt an ordinance that would effectively suspend the room tax for some, you know, until we get to the other side of this pandemic, I suppose. So those, that would mean that there wouldn't be any additional room tax dollars collected and paid over to the village and the Tourism, Tourism Commission going forward, if the board were to take that action, and that's a village board action. And that, that's, those are monies that haven't been collected yet. So we don't know how much we're talking about there. Then the, the other category of dollars involved room taxes that have already been collected by the hotel and paid over to the village. And I think that's that $85,000 number that Mike was talking about. And it sounds like, obviously, 70% of that money is, that's Tourism Commission money. So the village board doesn't have any authority to decide whether to, what to do with that money. So the only money left there, I, I think Mike said there was 25,000 of that was allocated to the village and some of that's already been spent. So I don't know what you're left with there. It may be that.
$5,000.
Okay, so there, there's $5,000 the village is sitting on in the, in that category of dollars that the board has the ability to, to spend. And then I think there's another category, which is room tax revenue that's been collected by the hotel, but not yet paid over to the village. That would be from, collected during the third quarter and the fourth quarter of 2020, if I understand what they're saying here. And they've got that at like $11,696. And so again, 30% of that the village board controls, the other 70% of that, that the commission controls. So 30% of the $11,690 is about 3,500 bucks. So, I mean, the village board is being asked essentially to take about $8,500 and allocate it to the hotel as a grant, I suppose, an economic development type of grant. And if the board feels that a public purpose would be served by doing that, I think the board can do that. So I think it's about $8,500 from the village board, if I'm doing the math right.
Thanks, Matt. Corey, did you have a question?
Matt actually answered my question.
Okay. Amanda, do you have a question?
I, I do, yeah. So I, I don't think any of us want this hotel to close, because that's terrible. We fought long and hard to get a hotel in Oregon, and I definitely think we should do what we can to help out. I'd be open to a grant, to granting our portion of the money back. My concern comes up where you said you wanted to use the, Dan, you said you wanted to use this money for advertising. And I have concerns about advertising that might encourage people to travel during a pandemic. So what I was thinking though, maybe, maybe advertising to purchase gift certificates now for use when the pandemic is over, something that would give you positive cash flow to keep you going. And then people could redeem it later when, you know, it could be supplemented by paying customers at the time. Yeah, I'm, I, something along those lines I would be open to. But if you had any other thoughts or wanted to elaborate, I'd listen to those. Thanks.
Thanks, Amanda. Jerry, did you have another question?
I did. I have a question for staff. And I guess this would be a question for Mike or Lisa. But basically, if we kept this money, how would that be used within the village budget? The 30% that we keep?
We, we would be using it at some point in the 22 budget.
Okay.
So we always use prior year money, you know.
What I'm getting at is, is it gonna affect the individual taxpayers at all?
Well, we're, we're using it, we're using $18,000 in the 21 budget that, and, you know, we would have probably had the levy for that.
Okay.
But so, oh, I mean, it's another source that allows us to have revenue that's outside the cap, Jerry.
Okay.
That's really the benefit of it.
Well, that was, that, that answers my question. So basically, what we're doing here is we're weighing a reduction in revenue against a grant. against a grant to keep the hotel afloat. Is that?
Well, that's like Matt was explaining, there's a couple of things going on here. And so that's that's one thing, but it's also it's also the if if this was normal time, we'd be we'd be also collecting room tax in the fourth and first and second quarter. They're asking, they're asking for us to suspend that as well. And then and then then they, you know, they would have to go to the tourism commission if they want an additional money for advertising, besides if the board just buys a given grant.
Thank you, Mike. I'm just gonna close by saying I support this request.
Thanks, Jerry. Okay, Corey, and then and then we'll let you talk, Dan. Corey, go ahead.
I'm I'm a bit torn with this. While I really want to protect our businesses, you know, every business could say, I'm having a tough time. I can't pay my my taxes for my building. And I don't know where you draw the line or how you distinguish, you know, between that. So it's it's terrible times. It's tough for everyone. I like Amanda have a little bit of concern, kind of encouraging, you know, travel in these times. So I'm I'm very much on the fence with this. My question is, I guess, Mike, would it be possible for them to go to the tourism commission to request some of the funding that's been allocated to them? Because it seems like that's where a lion's share of the money is anyway.
Yeah, they certainly they certainly could. There is some that there are some guidelines in the state law about what they what the tourism commission can allocate money for. And so we'd have to get a lot more, we have to get more detail from them. We probably actually make them. I know Lisa's on the on the call here, obviously. At least prepared this grant application that the that the commission and the board has seen, probably, it's right, probably around its back in March or April. And we probably make make them fill out that application to get more detail from Corey on exactly what they would do with the money.
This is Matt. Can I say one more thing?
Yes, please.
So I, one of the things that's interesting about the room tax is that by law and by design, the the majority of those dollars are intended to be used to promote tourism and visits to the village that will result in stays in the hotel. And obviously during the pandemic, that isn't necessarily something that we even want to be promoting. I'm hearing that from from some of the trustees expressing that understanding. And there's no requirement that the village actually have a room tax in effect in the village. So at least with respect to going forward, the village board can simply make the policy decision that, you know, we should repeal our room tax revenue, at least at this time. And then you can revisit that later and decide whether circumstances have changed such that it makes sense to reinstate that. And that, to me, that to to Corey's concern about anyone being able to say, you know, look, I'm having a trouble paying my taxes. Yeah, this is a different kind of tax. This is one that is specifically targeted in large part to generating trips to hotels. And so I think it it it's a little bit different than if it was just a, you know, a straight property tax payment that someone was talking about. Just wanted to mention that.
Thanks, Matt. Yes, go ahead, Randy.
So so I just wanted to to what Corey said, Corey, when I read this too, I was had the same concern that you did about, well, somebody could come forward and say, I don't want to pay my real estate tax. But what Matt just said was, I finally came to realize that this is so specific to the hotel, to occupancy tax, that that made it a little bit more easy for me. If it had been real estate tax, I probably would have a much bigger issue. But because it's really zeroed in on for the hotel, it's 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 a little easier for me to 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 say, okay. Just want to make that comment.
I have a a thought, Mike and Matt. Could we could we just defer third and fourth payments until sometime in twenty twenty-one and and stop? I don't know if I want to repeal. I maybe we have to repeal the ordinance for but could could we just stop collecting payment and then defer any sort of payment until sometime in twenty twenty-one instead of giving money back? Because if we give money back, we have to remember we have Airbnbs in this town that are also paying. And then if we start giving money back to Airbnbs, so on your so on your tourism commission, folks, here are the folks on your tourism commission. You've got me, restaurant owner, you've got Jimmy Bush, restaurant owner, you've got Adam Coyle, hotel owner, Judy Knudsen, Chamber, and Debbie Verhust. Three of those five people are losing money day to day. We are losing money and trying to make payroll. So I'm much more in favor of deferring payment than forgiving payment because, man, it's a slippery slope in this town. If we start forgiving payments, you're gonna have the business community up in arms. So I I would not vote for any forgiveness of payments. I would vote for deferral. And then let's stop all collection from, you know, effective from here on out. And those are my thoughts. Matt, are any of those thoughts legal?
Well, so with respect to, again, with respect to the, this is a, this is a fact, in fact, a tax. The ordinance establishes a a tax payment obligation. And so I think to to stop imposing that tax prospectively is one thing that I think makes sense and avoids the concerns that you have about refunding taxes that have already been paid. And and I do think that needs to be done by ordinance. I don't, we we can either repeal the ordinance or we could modify it to say that it's it's suspended for, you know, some period of time and then we can revisit it. So that that one's an easier call. The question of deferring the obligation to pay the funds, it's not something I've I've looked at. I suppose we could enter into an agreement under which they we agree to defer any action to collect monies that are currently due and owing. I'm not I'm not exactly sure how how that would work. I guess the idea is to defer it until sometime when the revenue situation changes and then they would pay it then. We could explore that if that looks like something that that might be preferable to simply allowing them to not pay it with respect to the dollars that have already been collected but not paid or or actually refunding the money that, I mean, with respect to the eighty-five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars that's already been paid, that's not a deferral issue. That's either we keep the money or we or we provide a grant to them. So we're really just talking about about twenty-five hundred dollars, maybe, or thirty-five hundred dollars that would be the subject of this deferral issue.
Gotcha. All right, Jenna, yes, go ahead.
So I appreciate Matt, your clarification, because as others have commented, I was quite on the fence in reading the packet. I like the idea, Jeanie, that you had of suspending or finding some way not necessarily repealing or removing the room tax, but if there's a way to modify the ordinance, like you had mentioned, Matt, to suspend the future date. And especially considering the past, like the past couple of days just alone, we've been hearing about vaccines and potential positive news, fingers crossed on that front. So I do, I I like the idea of maybe a modification to a future date and delaying payments versus giving them or stopping them altogether. As far as the money that we've already collected, I am not in favor of giving back that five thousand-ish dollars. I mean, if we've already budgeted for it, most of it's already been spent. So I feel like that needs to stay put if they want to go before the room tax commission. I think that for that portion, they certainly welcome to do that. But for the village portion that we've already collected, I think that needs to I think I got all four of the avenues for this one.
Thank you, Jenna. Any other thoughts from board board members? Dan, did you have a comment?
I had a couple of them if I if I have a couple more minutes. One of the things I thought about is, I guess, when I was referring to my second thing, previously paid taxes, I was more referring, now that you've explained it a lot more, what we could get from the tourism commission. I was thinking more, I was thinking it was the other way around where the the village got the larger portion and the tourism got the smaller portion. But so that's what would be I think our more direct route would be to go to the the tourism commission to try and get some of the money back for these specific advertising things. One of the other things which I was glad was said is, you're right, this is not a property tax. It's a tax that's based on revenue, room revenue that's received by the hotel. If the hotel's not open or if we have no occupancy, there is no tax generated. So and if it helps to think of it as a deferment or as repealing the tax, if we're if we have to close for the next six months or five months, there's not going to be any tax generated for the village or the commission anyways. I just have two other quick thoughts. One thing that we have done in the past with other municipalities is, say, there is the eight percent tax and of that the village, it's two percent, and the other six percent goes to the tourism. We we have worked it in the past is the money that would go to the tourism convention or visitors bureau actually gets redirected back to the hotel to spend on advertising. We've done that in the past with some other locations. Just maybe they did not have a tourism commission, so they allowed us to use the funds directly. And then the other one in that we are currently a part of, we we also operate Three Bears Resort in Warrens, Wisconsin, and they abolished or repealed the rooms tax or occupancy tax, and they created a voluntary contribution. So that they were not restricted on how they used the funds. But instead of having an occupancy tax of say eight percent, we have a voluntary contribution of two and a half percent, which is it's based completely how the the structure is now off a room revenue, but we make this contribution quarterly to to that village, the village of Warrens, which they and I had found it easier to utilize the funds the way they needed to. Just kind of throwing that out there because it's something that we're a part of and I have the the contract for that if Mike would ever want to see that or anything, or if that's something that the board would even think about. But I was just throwing out another option for you guys. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any any final thoughts, any motions anyone wants to make or lack of motions? Yes, Amanda.
So just for giggles, I'd like to make a motion to temporarily suspend collection of our room tax for six months, at which time we revisit the issue.
Yeah, could I suggest that that motion be modified to be a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance to that effect to bring back for your next meeting?
Yes. That's what I meant to say, exactly.
All right. I would I would second that motion. Is there is there further discussion on that? All right, everyone, understand the motion to, we're going to direct Matt to draft an ordinance to suspend all room tax collection until, what is that, May? Or you want to say June twenty twenty-one?
June's the end of second quarter, so.
Okay. Sure. All right. So yeah, so the end of the second quarter. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. So, gentlemen, you're you're not going to have to pay any room tax going forward. I says, I would I would recommend that if you want access to that, that sixty thousand dollars of the tourism commission has that you maybe contact who is Elise? Is she the coordinator for that? Contact Mike or Elise?
One of us is fine.
And we could call them, meaning of the tourism commission. I'll tell you that Adam won't be allowed to vote at that meeting. So it'd be it'd be four people voting, so that you know.
Just a quick clarification, the taxes that we have collected for third quarter and filed a return for, does your motion affect that? Or are we obligated at this point to submit that payment to the village?
Those would need to be paid, given the current state of affairs.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. And you know, I see all I see lots of our neighboring communities are closing their hotels till spring. So that's unfortunate. We don't want to see that happen.
Yeah, we are directly, we were managing the Verona hotels until earlier this year. And, you know, they closed one of them, and we do have ownership in part of those as well. So yeah, everyone's just trying to consolidate as much as possible to still keep open. But thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you. All right. So next on the agenda is item four C. We have a discussion with Brad, I'm sorry, excuse me, Brad Clark from the Oregon Snowblazers regarding the snowmobile route to Mulligans. And I think Brad was on, yep, there's Brad. All right. So we have, do anything in the packet on this? Or is Brad just gonna explain?
At least he's gonna bring up a map that Jeff did this morning.
Okay, cool.
There it is. Yep. It's like magic.
It's like magic. Okay. So Brad, is this something that we've done in the past or is it something new?
I've been here the last, I think, four years doing modified trail stuff from one end of the village to the other. Because something always changes. You guys keep building and getting in our So we just need permission to ride along Bergamot Boulevard this time.
I can help out a little bit with this. You know, they used to come in, they used to cross County Highway CC out on the Peterson Farm. And then come in what would be behind Parkinson's parcel and in the Highlands and Netherwood Park area kind of through the backstage of Beehive to be able to get a route into Mulligans. With Highlands and Netherwood now owned and being developed, that route is closed. So I've talked to Brad about the fact that they they do need to work with Dane County. And if there's any kind of special permissions within the right of way, we we can't give permission within the county right of way, but we do have rights to give permission within the village right away. There's a there's a fairly sizable burr, not berm terrace over there. And it does not have trees in it and everything like that. It would probably be fine. Brad, you've probably experienced this other places, just as 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 communities grow, your routes get more and more challenging, I would assume.
For sure, yes.
Yeah. I will say this, the the Oregon, it's for the Snowblazers have been a a good organization. We we've, I I Brad and I have worked together now for what, four or five years?
Yeah.
And no problems. They've they've always done really well with their routing, their routes, their cleanup, their signage and everything like that.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Any any comments or concerns on the proposed map? Yes, Corey?
I see that the route kind of cuts diagonally across the CC Bergamot intersection. I would think that we would want that to cross on the west side of Bergamot versus cutting diagonally across CC. Just seems like a safety issue to me.
That can be done. That's not a issue on my end.
I think the idea behind it was to try to encourage there to, I mean, maybe it'd be better if you came across. Now, you know, it's tough because, you know, there's some that terrace where Beehive is has some new, brand new trees in it this last year. They look really nice. And so the terrace is already kind of occupied with some stuff there. So but yeah, I mean, I don't know if you could come across and then cross Bergamot Boulevard.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's that's not a big deal. I don't, I mean, I'd have to look at it and see what's actually there. But if that's possible, we would definitely do that.
Yeah, I guess I I would be okay, you know, continuing south until you cross Bergamot as well. But just not crossing CC at an angle because you could have, you know, vehicles making turning movements there that just wouldn't expect somebody to be cutting diagonally across the intersection.
All right, sounds like he's agreeable to that. Any anything else on this one? So Mike, it looks like you're looking for a motion to approve the snowmobile route to Mulligans. So Corey, do you want to go ahead and make that motion, maybe with your amendment?
Sure, I'm I'll make a motion to approve a a snowmobile route to Mulligans, I guess, working with staff to cross CC perpendicular rather than diagonally.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. Second by glitch, is there further discussion or questions? Okay, second by Glash, is there further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right.
You guys.
Brad, we appreciate, appreciate your work.
Brad, now we can hope for snow, right?
God, I hope so.
That would be fun. Maybe not quite yet, though.
Yeah, let's see, let's hold off a little bit.
Well, hopefully it'll bring in revenue to that hotel.
True, good point. All right, good point.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep, thank you.
All right, we will keep marching on. This is item five. We are now at the twenty twenty-one village budget. To make a note, the entire twenty twenty-one revised budget is on the village's website. So tonight we're going to do a public hearing to formally approve the budget. So at this point, I will open the public hearing for the twenty twenty-one village budget. Looks like Mike, you have some slides you want to go through?
Yep.
So yeah, and including some of the changes. So do you want to go ahead and do that?
Yes, I'll at least get there.
Okay.
So I, I just wanted to thank, as always, I think of board, board members for your input and direction during the budget process. And also thank the department, especially Lisa and Candy for their hard work preparing the budget. Since it's a lot of work, we start in June and end up tonight, so it's a long process. We held two meetings in October, the twelfth and the nineteenth, and the nineteenth, the board approved the preliminary budget. And then we scheduled the public hearing for tonight. The tax increase in, for the twenty twenty budget was on an average house was about eighty-eight dollars. Now for twenty-one, it's going to be going about half of that, forty-four dollars. The final assessed value decreased a little bit from the preliminary budget by four hundred thousand dollars, which just took the average increase from forty-four ten to forty-four sixty-seven in the final budget. Please stop me if you have any questions. I'm going through this. The next page, page four, is just some summary information regarding the total tax levy, the general fund levy, the mill rate. Again, this is only for the village tax purposes. State share revenue, state highway, which for us fortunately is going up again. We still don't have the final number on the recycling grant and then the Dane County Senior Center of Funding. And Rachel, I think that, for your email today, I think that actually is going up next year. Right now, if I, I read that quickly.
Yes, the senior center of funding, it will be about thirty-five hundred dollars more than we expected. We got their final numbers today and it turns out to be more because of the way they worked out a couple of grants and things. So that's good news.
Yeah, that's good. So have to amend the budget at some point, so, you know. Then the next couple of slides just show the, the tax levy. Lisa and I always put in this tax levy sheet on, go one more please, Elise. One more sheet, thank you. This is our standard tax levy sheet, which shows the, the tax levy for each item. The total tax levy is going up about a little over three percent. The assessed value is going above a little, little, less than six. And it, and we're showing here that we're just four dollars under the mandated state cap, so we were able to do that again. And again, this shows the forty-four sixty-seven increase. And at the bottom, we're, we're showing the net new construction. And some of this is very related to what we were talking with David from elders last week about the assessed value and net new construction. You can see like, for example, in eighteen, it was a hundred and fifty-three. This year is only a hundred and eight. Lisa and I think that maybe for the twenty-two budget, it could actually could be under two hundred, or sorry, under a hundred thousand dollars. And that, that's why we're, we're, you know, we're a little concerned about the twenty-two and twenty-three budgets because of the net new construction amounts that we that may occur because of the COVID nineteen situation. Any questions on that sheet? The next sheet is the, some more information about the budget. As discussed at the October budget meetings, this budget will allow the village to qualify for expenditure restraint payment in twenty-two. And so, you know, averages sometimes thirty thousand dollars, so that'll be, that'll be helpful for that budget. And this budget, as I mentioned, is in compliance with the state mandated property tax cap. The assessed value increased five point eight compared to seven point six two. This, this budget includes the village's current wage offer, one point five percent to the police union for twenty-one, with non-union employees receiving a one percent in twenty-one. And the village may provide an additional half percent to non-union employees at some point in twenty-one. It'll all depend on what happens with expenses as well as what the state may or may not do with our state aid next year. I'm still hanging out there unfortunately for the league. I mentioned that briefly here. So Lisa's going to sort of go through the next couple of slides. There's some changes to the preliminary budget since the October nineteenth meeting and since we published this in, in October twenty-nine.
Okay, so some of the major changes that happened, as you can see, we, we added twenty-five thousand dollars to continuing appropriations, which were for tid number four. And this is the capital fund for tid number four, so this was money that we had borrowed the prior year that we'll be spending. We borrowed it in twenty twenty and will be spending it in twenty twenty-one. And then the next one is the fifty thousand dollars, reduce loan proceeds by fifty thousand dollars. Basically, it's for the same purpose. We borrowed those funds in. Let's see. Oh, actually, this one is for
Main Street.
Yeah, the Main Street project that's going to happen in twenty twenty, the water portion of that is going to be funded through user fees from the water. From the water fund. So that's what that is. And then on to page nine. We did an additional ten thousand dollars of continuing appropriations that we're going to be using carrying over from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. So five thousand dollars for the police training and then five thousand dollars of crossing guard wages since earlier in twenty twenty, when school was not in session and we had a cost savings at that point, so we're bringing those funds forward. And then there, we're currently working on the, with the police union. And right now, one of the things that they're proposing is increasing their uniform allowance by fifty dollars in twenty twenty-one, so that's fifty dot, fifty dollars per per patrol officer that that will increase. Actually, it's for all of the uniformed officers, all the sworn, yeah. And then there was the adjustment, we're still continuing to work on the wage settlement for the, the next contract with the police union. So right now they're at about a one and a half percent, so we did include those additional funds to cover an additional half percent for the police union. Oh, and then the crossing guards, when we initially started doing our budget, we had a two percent across the board for everybody. And I reduced that to one percent, but I did miss the crossing guard, so I made an adjustment for that. And it was like, it was four hundred and nine dollar difference for that. And then we did increase the revenues of refunds and miscellaneous by five thousand dollars. And the main thing that's driving that is our credit card program we have through US Bank right now. We are utilizing the program a lot more efficiently now. So we are, we continue to receive a lot more of the like, it's like a dividend for using their credit card program. So we decided to increase that, but just because we are utilizing that program a lot more efficiently.
And generally speaking, that extra revenue help us cover the increase in the, the union offer, the offer to the union, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions about any of the changes since the last meeting?
Any board members have any questions on this final version of the budget? All right, doesn't look like it.
Now, just have a few other things to mention. Some of this will be talked about during the overview on October twelfth, but, you know, and we were just talking about at least the next slide, please, please. Thank you. The borrowing for the street maintenance for we're going to, you know, borrow for twenty-one and twenty-two, we're going to be borrowing money for the North Main Street project with the county. And then doing the improvements to Jameson Street Perry Parkway intersection. And then funding, so some of this money is already in the budget to hopefully repair the Rotary Trail next year as well as continuing to develop the Southeast Business Park in twenty-one. And then the next slide talks about through the league, Wisconsin, there's still possibility the village could lose state aid in twenty-one due to the less federal aid for COVID nineteen. This is why Lisa and I, I think since the fall, we've been trying to keep our contingency a little bit higher than maybe normal, just to, just to try to cover if we get slash twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars in state aid, we want to be able to have something to fall back on, so. In, in fund for twenty-three, the playing fields development, I wanted to make sure, I'm not sure I, I noted this or stressed this during the, the budget preparation, but we are using park improvement fees to pay the, the tax. So I read in tax levy to pay for the Highlands and Netherwood Park debt service, so that park is, has not hit the debt service. And I think we mentioned that when we first talked about going out and doing the park, we felt that for at least a couple of years, there's going to be enough impact these being generated that, that debt service will not hit the levy, which is a good thing. And we did get our workers' compensation modifier, which decreased, but we're still waiting for additional insurance information, which may result in a twenty-one budget minimum. We'll have to see what happens when we get the information. Then the next slide, we still are doing the funding for the, updating the financial management analysis with elders. We're going to continue to work with the search firm to recruit for my replacement. And then thank you to the town of Dunn and Village of Brooklyn for their continued support for the senior center. They're doing their support again in twenty-one. Next page, I just highlighted some of the major equipment purchases, the squads, the wood chipper, the tennis court resurfacing, the flatbed truck, the computer server and the computer replacements. And Corey, well, I'm, I'm going to have someone from Computer Magic on upcoming village board meeting, he'll do a lot better job explaining why he still thinks we should have a physical server versus the cloud. So, and at this point, we're not buying this tonight anyways. This is just in the, you know, in the budget at this point, too. I think we are pleased to present the budget to the board for your consideration. And again, thank you for your direction and input in, in time this year. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. All right, so we are still in the public hearing here. Let's see, so next up is the review of the tax levy sheet. And I'll just read this, so that, so please note that the proposed twenty twenty-one increase is forty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents for an average assessed home compared to eighty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents in twenty twenty. Following the approval of the twenty twenty-one preliminary budget on October nineteenth, you just saw the final adjustments to the budget documentation. So there we go. So I think that's pretty, pretty impressive. I mean, it's like a very low increase, I feel like, for the average home. Good job trustees, good job staff. Thank you for being cognizant of taxpayer money.
Yeah, yeah, we, we, I think we mentioned that, that we were trying to be very aware of that with COVID billing. And I understand everyone's hurting this, this time. But I think it's a good budget. We're still doing a lot of things next year, so.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So at this point, we would take public comments. Is there anyone on the Zoom meeting call that would like to make a public comment on the twenty twenty-one preliminary budget here? But it seems like I know. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And now we get to discuss and possibly approve Resolution twenty thirty-five tax levy and the twenty twenty-one budget. For the public who may be watching, we've been talking about this budget since June. So what you see tonight, if you don't see a lot of discussion, it's because we've had multiple, multiple meetings. We've had special meetings. We had three special meetings to hammer out this budget. Staff's been working on it for six months. So we appreciate that. I'm not sure if there's any final discussion from board members. There's someone feels comfortable making a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-one budget and changes to the budget since the October nineteenth budget meeting.
We, I'll move to approve.
All right, thank you, Randy. Is there a second? Okay, was, uh, second by Jacobson. All right, so we have a motion to approve twenty, Resolution twenty thirty-five, also adopts the twenty twenty-one budget and then changes to the budget since the October nineteenth budget meeting. Any further discussion? Famous last words? Yes, Jerry Bollig. Oh, Jerry, you're on mute. Your famous last words are not being heard.
Well, maybe it's probably better off that way. No, I've been around village budget and the village boards for quite a while. And I know for a fact that an awful lot of work goes into this budget. And I want to thank the entire village staff and especially the administrative and accounting staff, because as anyone that's involved with municipal budgeting knows, the budgeting process is a year-round project. Doesn't stop tonight with the adoption of this budget. It, it goes on and on and on and on because there are constantly changes. And not only that, but you're tabulating expenses, so. It, kudos to everyone and, and thank you for your hard work on this.
Very well said. I always suspect that we would all agree. Thank you, thank you, staff.
And I'll, are we looking for a second?
Nope, we're good. We're just going to vote.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Woo-hoo, motion carries.
Thank you.
Make you teary-eyed, your last budget?
Yeah, yeah.
I think I was figuring out, I thought I was doing my twenty-fifth budget, but I told Lisa, it's appropriate, I miscounted. I think this is my twenty-fourth, so only. I'm sorry, as an administrator, probably done probably thirty-plus in, in my career, so yeah, this is the last one. I'm not crying, sorry.
All right, good job, team. Okay. All right, so then we're moving on to item six, this is the village attorney and the village administrator report. Oh, I got a note that item A isn't going to be ready tonight as we thought, so we're just going to table that and move and for another future meeting.
Yes, please.
All right, so one last thing to, to chat about. Item B, this is a discussion and possible action regarding reconsideration of special election for trustee position, which is the one-year the village staff request to discuss the motion from the July twentieth, twenty twenty board meeting with the village board. And to recap, that motion with Horton moved seconded by Glash to fill the vacant trustee position by appointment until April twenty twenty-one. And in April twenty twenty-one, the trustee position we put on the ballot for a one-year term and in April twenty twenty-two during a special election. And that motion carried six zero. So Candy has written us a memo here. And I'm not sure, Candy, you want to present it or what, how we like to go forward?
Well, sure. The only, first of all, I just want everybody to know that I'm not going against anybody's wishes and just bringing this back up because we're still in the COVID pandemic. And I was thinking, you know, this, this year has made us think of so many things after we discussed this back in, what was it, August? And Luke finally came to the board in September, and now he's only been on the board for a couple of months. I was thinking just to reduce the amount of people out getting nomination papers. I was just wondering if we wanted to reconsider appointing him until the term ends in twenty twenty-two. So it's just a, it's just a thought. I think that obviously Luke is doing a good job. And it's just one more thing that I guess we're, we've all had a busy, busy election year. And it's just a thought to put out there.
And I think Candy, your last paragraph of your memo that you and I have talked about is that we also think it'd be less confusing because we have, we have the village president's seat would be up three trustees and then this would be Luke, so we thought it'd be just less confusion if Luke just sort out the full term.
Yeah, and, and honestly too, like I, I think I've thought this to death. Luke could choose to run for a two-year position instead of the one-year position and someone else could be potentially pushed off the board, too.
Yeah.
I don't want that to happen, but it's just a, just a thought. I don't want that to happen, but it's just a, just a thought.
Okay Candy, so just need to make sure I, I understand this, so as it stands now on the ballot. There will be, you'll be able to vote for village president.
Yep.
You will be able to vote for three two-year positions. Then you will vote for one, one-year position. Okay, got it.
Yeah.
That's, that's a lot of stuff to, that's, that's really interesting, those are a lot of openings. Wow, we could have a whole, and by we, I mean you all, because I'm not running for reelection. You all could have, you could have a whole new board.
Majority.
Well, good luck with that. Oh, I'm so mean, so anywho, do we have thoughts on Candy's memo?
Or you could run for trustee, Jeannie.
Yeah, I'll run for the one-year term.
Yeah.
Luke, Luke, you can run for president or two-year term, that'd be great, let's all swap positions.
Yeah, right, right.
If I can say one more thing. The other thing that I was thinking of was um. If. Luke, I just lost my train of thought. So there you go, COVID, I guess, right?
I, I think what's, what makes this interesting, so Luke was appointed, you know, to fill the term of, of David Donovan. Well, Luke doesn't, so Luke, you don't have to run again at all, but if you did run again. You could run for a one-year position, a two-year position, or village president. You would not have to run for that one-year position, and also people could run against you for the one-year position. Yeah, okay, I'm starting to see why this might be confusing, but um, but again, it depends on what other board members think.
Yeah. And, and, and Candy and I, again, I want to emphasize one thing, we are not being, trying to be disrespectful to the board's decision, we. You, you, the board makes the final decision, but the more we thought about it over the last couple of months, we, we were trying to wait for the perfect time to bring this up. And it, it is a good time, because it permits memo. If, if we don't, the board, again, the board's decision, the board doesn't change its mind, then, then between. Actually, tonight and December twenty-ninth, the board will need to issue its order for us, uh, the spring election. Um, in April, on April sixth, oh, thank you, thank you, Lisa. So that's why we thought it was good timing to talk about it tonight.
Gotcha.
Yeah, the other thing I thought about too, um, and what kind of made me start thinking about this. Is I know that when we've initially talked about this. Um, I, I anticipated a few more people applying, but we only had two candidates apply. For the last round of interviews as well. So, you know, to me, I understand and respect the board's decision on wanting the public to make the decision. Um, but like I said, I anticipated more people to run. And I guess my opinion may have changed if there was, you know, fifteen or twenty people that ran for the. Ran for the position, probably even ten, I should say.
Gotcha. Uh, so board thoughts? Yes, Mr. Bollig?
Uh, I'm just gonna weigh in here, I think Candy's got a, a very good point, and I would support. That decision or whatever decision the board makes on this. As long as we get the position filled.
Gotcha, okay Jenna?
Um, I think Candy made some, I also think Candy made good points in her memo, but the one thing that I feel like we haven't really. Talked about is the fact that when, when we appointed Luke, we appointed him to a six-month position, or six, a few months. And so, I mean. Do, do you wanna stay on longer? I guess that, I feel like that needs to be part of the equation as well, because I want to just make the, have us make the decision without letting you weigh in.
Good boy.
Mr. Stitch, what are, what are your thoughts?
On the spot, but also.
So first, I just need to publicly say that, uh, this was not my plan at all, right? Put into this board meeting, I had no idea until I read the packet, um. Yes, I, uh, yeah, I had planned on running uh, for reelection if uh, this uh. For this uh, six-month position, but if the board. Um, and I would recuse myself from this vote, obviously, but if the board would. Want me to just serve out the two-year term, then I would absolutely do that to serve the community.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Luke, that's important to know. We'd, we'd hate to change something and then have you decline. Although, how twenty twenty is going, would it really surprise us?
Yeah, really. That's a, that's a great question, Jenna.
Yes, okay, Mr. Glish, I see your hand.
Just, just my opinion, I, I have no issue with um, taking uh, Luke's seat out to, to twenty twenty-two.
Randy, what does that mean?
Oh, so, so instead of having him run again in April.
Okay.
It'd be the next year.
I, I understand.
April.
Basically extend, extend his appointment. For the full, for the full term of what would have been Donovan's term.
Yes, yes.
That's why I have a, I have a procedural question, um. We, we, Brandon and Matt said it, we can do that legally, right? If we wanted to, we could make a new motion to extend Luke's appointment, or do we?
Well, so the board has not yet um, actually issued an order calling for a special election yet. In this spring, however, when the board made the appointment. Earlier, it did so in a way that indicated that that was its intent, so. It, it seems to me that if, if you want, if the board wants to. Um, change the direction here that it set in motion when it made the appointment. Uh, it would be appropriate to make a motion to extend the appointment, uh, uh, Luke's appointment. Through uh, the full term uh, through the A- April twenty twenty-two.
Gotcha, okay, so just so we know, if we're interested in doing that, that's how it's done. Okay, further, further board thoughts, yes, Amanda?
So first off, I want to defer to Corey really quick, you had your hand up a bunch of times, do you wanna go first?
You're, okay, you're way over here in the corner, yes, Corey, do you wanna go first, I'm sorry?
Sure, thanks, Amanda, and I understand with Zoom, it's hard to see. And um. I guess. We asked Luke, you know, if he'd want the one-year term. I guess my question is, is would he rather run and have a two-year term, would that be his preference, because I wouldn't wanna. You know, snub his decision if that's what he preferred, I guess. So I guess Luke, do you have any feelings on that, would you rather have the one-year term, or would you rather be running for a two-year term?
I guess if the board voted for me to stay on for the full two-year term, I would just take that.
I was gonna say, that's, that's less risk to him, because if he goes up for reelection, there's a chance he would not keep a seat, I mean.
Yep, yep, and then even if it was, um, so if it did go to an election, would. A prospective candidate need to select whether they were running for a one-year or a two-year term? And can you only run for a one position?
So I can, I can answer that, because I think I know this, so yes, you can, so you could only run for one uh, trustee seat. However, if, if you are a current trustee, you may run for reelection to your current trustee seat. And run for village, village president. So um, so like when I ran, I was up for reelection, so I could have run for village president and my seat. So that if I didn't get elected village president, I was hopefully still elected to my seat. Um, I don't, you don't see people often doing that, because usually if someone wants to be village president, they want to be village president. Um, but, yeah, so that's how, so that's how, so it even complicates things further.
Yeah, and Matt, does, does the one and two-year term, can someone apply for both of those, or not, since it's essentially both a trustee position?
You know, honestly, I don't know the answer to that, um. I assume that you can, my, my sense is you, you're gonna file papers, it has to be, you have to pick what you're filing papers for.
Yeah.
So it would be for one or the other, not both. Um, I think you'd have to pick, you know, are you running for that one, for the one-year uh, term, or you that remains on this one seat? Or for a different seat, Candy is weighing in, she might know better than I do on that.
I think that is correct, but I would have to review it, um. But I'm pretty sure that if it's this, if it's this, if it's a trustee position, you can only run for either the one term or the two.
Yeah, for, for that reason, I think it's pretty problematic, because you could have ten people running for a two-year term. And nobody's run for a one-year term.
And that's, that's where, that's where my confusion comes in, where I start overthinking stuff and. Trying to explain to people, no, you're running for the one-year term. Are you sure you want to run for the one-year term, and then I, I just think it's confusing, but what hasn't been this year?
Yes, Amanda, go ahead.
Um. So I, personally, I'm less concerned about voters being confused. I think we could probably straighten that out, we could get information out there. Um, I'm more swayed by the argument of having one less person out collecting nomination signatures.
Right.
During a pandemic. Um, uh, and. It'd be one thing if we were saying, oh, we're gonna extend his term for ten years or something, and it's not, it's for one more year. I think people understand that normally, I would say absolutely, let the voters decide, that's how democracy works. You know, they'll figure it out on the ballot, but um, I'm, I'm really, really leaning towards. Uh. Appointing Luke for the, the rest of David Donovan's term and um. Calling it a day, and I, I think Luke's been great on the board, I don't have any issues uh, with his. Performance at all, so.
So Amanda, that sounds a lot like a motion, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion that the board appoints Mr. Stitch to the rest of. Uh, David Donovan's term, and will be up again in twenty twenty-two in the spring.
All right, that is, we have a motion, we have a second by Glish.
Gee, may I just, may I just ask Matt, Matt, so is that, is that clear enough for the record?
Yes, yeah, that's fine.
So we don't, we didn't, we need to say that we're, this is superseding the motion made um, the previous motion, uh.
Well, I think it's clear that it is, so I think.
I wanted to make sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, does everyone understand the motion?
Yes.
For hiring Luke for longer. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, well, congratulations, Mr. Stitch, you're now stuck with this for a year longer than you perhaps thought.
And I think Luke, Luke made a great point, we didn't, we purposely did not talk to him before we put this on the agenda, because we didn't want to look like, you know, he was trying to. I, I know he won't influence us, but just want to make sure it was done very independently from Luke's.
Yes, we're nothing, if nothing but transparent, yes, Corey?
Um, did Luke want to abstain for the record, he had mentioned that before, so it's.
Oh yes, I'm sorry, yes, so um, Peggy, can you make him a note that the vote was six-zero with um, Stitch abstaining? Thank you, I totally forgot, thank you, right?
Yep.
All right, spectacular, we will keep on truckin'. We are going to item seven, approval of minutes, we don't have any. Now we are on to item H, approval of the November sixteenth, twenty twenty vouchers. So tonight, uh, we have vouchers in the amount of two hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Would someone like to make a motion to approve to get those on the table, please? Motion by Glish, second by.
Stitch.
Peterson, thank you, all right, questions or discussion on vouchers in front of us?
Does Jerry wanna go first?
I can.
Go ahead, Jerry.
You, you, you get to decide, you're wearing that nice hat.
Well, I'll let you go first.
Okay, thank you, Randy, um, my first question is on Computer Magic. It's a COVID two-year protection plan, is that any different than just a regular protection plan?
And Lisa could have to dig out the, the invoice on it.
Okay, while she's doing that, uh, the Rettler Construction Observation, Jeff, is that, is that for uh? Perry Parkway?
I did, I did a jury, um, that's for Highlands and Netherwood Park.
Yeah.
Highlands and Netherwood, okay, is that project done?
The, the park is uh, done with construction, yes, but you know, their bills, bills will sometimes lag a few, few months. Month and a half, so.
All right, um. Other than that, um, the first installation that uh, Staley's did. Um, what caused that to be seventy-five hundred dollars?
That, that's the, those are those, those UV lamps that you guys approved for the senior center, that's the installation for those in those, in the ducts.
That's coming out of the ro- routes to recovery funding?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you, you approved that two or three meetings ago.
A- actually, that, that was on the last uh, agenda, and Jerry, Jerry wasn't here, uh, but we talked about it, yeah.
Okay, so those are UV lights to, to uh, clean the, clean the air that's going through there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a COVID step?
Mm-hmm, correct, yep.
Those are my questions, thank you.
I think, I think, Jeannie, I think Lisa's got her answer.
Oh yes, go ahead, Lisa.
So the um, the COVID protection plan with it is, um, we bought five additional laptops. Um, for the staff here at Village Hall, so that we can work from home, and this is just their, um. Their protection program that's part of buying a new laptop.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Randy, did you have?
I, I just have one for the police chief, it's um, nine fifty-three. It's a. Uh, consulting, it's PD Quick Clerks parking program, I just wondered, chief, is that just some kind of software for. Parking tickets or something, or? So nine five three, ten nine five three. Right, right there.
There, okay, um. Yes, uh, so Rudy, our support supervisor utilizes a parking program where she can actually. And it expedites things.
Yeah.
Kind of silly, um, she can actually suspend drivers' registrations on their vehicles if they don't pay. Okay. Parking citations.
I figured it was some kind of software, thank you, chief.
Yep.
That's it for me, Jeannie.
Okay, thank you, Amanda, go ahead, then Corey.
Uh, yeah, so my first one is on the same page there, um, the Sprint print. Uh, for the Oregon School District mailing, what is that?
That, uh, this is Jennifer at the library, and we did a mailing to both village residents. And uh, then also did the mailing to the rest of the Oregon School District about the library campaign. Um, that mailing has since raised over thirty-two, or over thirty thousand dollars, um, so. That expense has come back to us, um, multiplied many times over.
Awesome, awesome, uh, and then uh, my other question was um, uh, more for Matt, actually, the. Uh, under one oh seven eighty-nine, uh, it's the senior peppers, the food for the poll workers. Since I work the polls, do I need to recuse myself from that item?
Man, man's off the, off.
Oh, sorry, or Mike, then.
No, you, you don't, no, you're fine, you can, you can do that. Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Additional questions, oh, go ahead, Lisa.
And I just wanted to say too, with, with the additional laptops that we bought for the staff up here at Village Hall, we did put that through the routes to recovery. Um, to get reimbursed for those. What we're looking at doing, starting the week after Thanksgiving, is. Having half of the staff here on one day, half of the, half of the staff here in alternate days, so that. If one person comes down with COVID, at least we keep, we'll have two separate pools of people. So at least we won't have to shut down Village Hall, hopefully. Um, so we'll still have half the staff if half goes out, so we're just trying to be. Um, be ready for whatever may happen in the next few months.
Sounds good. Any?
Question, one.
Go ahead.
One stood out to me, not due to the monetary value, but the title on it, and I was just wondering, I think it's eleven zero zero three. Paranormal activity or research or something?
Hi Chip, Luke, this is Jennifer at the library, that is our X, our expense as well, that is a uh, library program that we held. That had over a hundred and forty people attend, um, and that is actually, this is actually a pass-through account, so that particular bill was actually paid by the friends of the library. Not village uh, tax dollars.
It sounds interesting.
Further questions? All right, Peggy, do you want to do a roll call vote then for us?
Olic?
Yes.
Glish?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item nine, proclamations and announcements, uh, board comments, board members, anything to say here? Yes, go ahead, Randy.
Jean, can I, can I have Jennifer give us an update on the library gala that was held on Saturday night?
Sure.
Hi, this is Jennifer again. Um, we had some great fundraising events over the weekend. So I first want to thank the village board members who attended and also all the businesses that really helped us out, even though a lot of them are struggling. We had a silent auction that ran for about a week and closed on Sunday. That made over $6,400 as of right now. With over 150 items donated by local community businesses. Um, so that was amazing. We also had a gala event on Saturday night, which wasn't a Badger football night when we first planned it, I don't believe. But we still had a good, uh, good attendance and total for the weekend, we raised over $11,000. So we had a, a great nineteen twenties themed virtual program. We had Bob Lindmeyer was our MC. Um, we had a mixologist. We had some historical photos from the nineteen twenties from the Oregon Area Historical Society. We had OCA Media donated some video for us about our campaign with community members talking about why the library was important to them. Um, I'm forgetting a lot of things, but it was just a really fun night. We had a costume contest and a nineteen twenties photo booth. So people could come in their costumes and get their photos taken. That's kind of what I have to share about that. Randy, um, do you have anything to add?
Just good, great job, Jennifer. Great job.
You had, it was definitely a community event, not, not just for the silent auction, but also for the gala. There was a lot of people, uh, involved in making it happen and a lot of people that participated in both of those activities. So I appreciate everybody participating and sponsoring and supporting it in whatever way they did.
Yes, very, very well said. Any other board comments at this time? All right, uh, we have a note that alternate side parking has started November fifteenth through April first. And Chief, I saw on Facebook that you guys are giving out the little warning, the green, the green slips. So how long do the warnings last?
It's a good question. So we, we actually had a discussion here about that. I think everybody's a little off because of the pandemic. Um, and now we're dealing, we're working with a lot of people in the community that are working from home. So they may not be moving their cars as often. So what we're going to do is, uh, really just kind of evaluate on a daily basis, how many warnings we're issuing. Um, our night shifters are going to hit it hard and try to get those warnings out there to set a tone. But if we find we're still issuing warnings a large amount even to a weekend, we may extend that out if a weather allow for it, just to help kind of re educate people on the, the ordinance.
Sure, sounds good. All right, uh, we have a update regarding leaf collection. Jeff Row.
Yeah, we are, we're wrapping up leaf collection. I just saw just a few very rare piles out there today. Most everything is down. Our, we're only having, we had two trucks out last week, so that was good. Two crews out and this week we just have one crew. Uh, we'll continue to, to make a few more passes, but um, I just, if people have stuff out in front of their lawn and they think we missed it, don't be afraid to give us a call and let us know, give us an address and um, we'll make sure we can get it, uh, picked up before, hopefully before the snow flies.
Sounds good. All right, I am D under staff comments. We have a list here of upcoming virtual meetings. So the regular December seventh and twenty-first meetings, um, no meeting on January fourth. So we have a meeting on the eleventh. And then, um, this is a, a special one on Thursday, January fourteenth. Make a note that we have a joint meeting with the Planning Commission for Banda Walls Presentation on West Side Parks Conceptual Plan. So that's not on a Monday night. Make sure you make a note on your calendar. Mike or anyone, any note, other notes from staff?
I did want to mention something, not, not, nothing about meetings, but just that the food pantry, the local food pantry is looking for goods and, and and items to distribute their, uh, on their Facebook page. And so we are encouraging people to, you know, try, try to be generous towards the food pantry during holiday season particularly.
Yes, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, item ten, communication miscellaneous business. We have a discussion on possible action regarding resolution number twenty dash three six. This is a second submittal. Declaring expenditures to be submitted to routes to recovery, local government aid grants. We have recommended motion to approve this resolution in the allocation of 165,339. Someone like to make that motion, please? Yes, we have some emotion by Peterson and a second by Stitch. Thank you. All right, so this is, um, applying for, for free money for a grant, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah. Candy's still on?
Yes, Candy.
Yeah.
All good.
Any questions on this from anyone?
I, I just want to say publicly again to thank Candy for, this is, this is a lot of work involved doing this. And if we are able to collect $165,000 in the state, that obviously helps us out a lot. So thank you, Candy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yes, Jerry Ballack.
Yes, and Lisa, this is where the laptops, all the laptops got purchased, correct?
That is correct, yep. Um, we submitted them through this route to the recovery with the second submittal. So hopefully we'll find out soon when we'll get that additional money.
Very good. Keep up the good work.
All right, so we have a motion as second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item ten B, we have a discussion on possible action regarding polling location for the 2021 elections. We have recommended motion to approve the polling locations for the cycle. Our 2021 elections are, the spring primary is on Tuesday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one if needed. And the spring election is on Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-one. We have the polling locations that are being proposed would all take place in Village Hall, the, the boardroom and the community room. Questions on this? So basically the same as we did for the presidential election in November.
Yep, ever since April, we've been staying here.
Yes, Amanda.
Do we need a motion to keep it the same or?
Yep.
Okay, then I'll make the motion to, uh, keep all the voting at the Village Hall for the 2021 elections.
All right, thank you. Second by Jacobson. And then do you have a question, Jenna, or just second?
I was just gonna second it.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, item C is the COVID nineteen update.
I, I, I put this on the agenda because this is a, a serious message from the public health department. And again, just reminding everyone to be following the guidelines and, and Lisa touched on it a little bit. It's, it's discussed under number two on the agenda that the, this was on the news again yesterday that hospitals are very concerned about what's going to happen the week after Thanksgiving and the week after Christmas. And obviously they're, they're, in, in this message, you're asking people, you know, not to make the regular Thanksgiving plans and just, you know, have Thanksgiving with your immediate family. But, um, as we're seeing that we're, uh, we're making plans in the event we have to close the Village Hall for an office, Candy had another good idea that we decided everyone should have a laptop up here, that in case we have to close that employees will be able to work from home. And that's what we're purchasing through this resolution just approved. We're hoping that we can get through the two holiday seasons and the, the two really cold months of the winter. And hopefully, I know, I heard they're, they're still talking about hopefully having the vaccine by, by March or April. So our goal is to get, you know, to get through the next four months. And, um, sort of skipping ahead here, a message of the village property taxpayers. If you want to pay your village property tax in person, please call the village hall at, at our general number to make an appointment. And the staff is highly recommending taxpayers pay their taxes via the mail or use our Village Hall secure Dropbox, very similar to the absentee voting. And staff can email a receipt to taxpayers if they provide an email address. So again, we're asking people not to come and pay their taxes in person to put themselves, other residents and the staff, uh, in jeopardy. And please pay by mail or, or Dropbox, Dropbox, please.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from board members on that? All right, moving on to item. Now, where are we?
Uh, D.
C.
Yep.
Okay, here we go.
Just, just hammer.
Yes. All right, so we, uh, it looks like you've kind of covered all of that.
Oh, sorry, I was, I was skipping ahead.
No, no, it's perfectly, I don't have to read it.
Okay, good, good.
Right. All right, so then we're moving on to item D. So this is discussion on possible action regarding the hydraulic hammer for a backhoe. We have a recommended motion to approve the procurement of an Allied seven 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 E hydraulic breaker from LF George in the amount of $10,882.35. That sounds exciting. When anyone like to make that motion? Jury is going to make the motion for discussion, I'm assuming. Someone like to second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Stitch. All right.
So how do you, how do you like that hammer, Jeff?
We're assuming that you already bought it.
Yeah.
Oh, he's never going to live that down.
Yeah, no, he's not.
He's speechless. I can't believe it.
Yeah.
Jeff, any big thoughts on the backhoe? Wait, wait, the.
This afternoon.
I thought I saw it out in the boat.
Yeah, so, okay, in all seriousness, yeah, this is something broke in the last two months and, um, we tried to get it fixed, the, the one that's, I think, a two thousand and five. They just, they can't get parts for it. And so this is an attachment that we use on our backhoe. Um, our capital plan has us upgrading our backhoe and attachments in the three years. I did confirm that when we do upgrade our backhoe. I'm the only one that can play music. And when we do upgrade our, our backhoe in a few years, um, that this would, uh, mate, um, well, we can get mating plates for, for anything less, would continue to be able to just use this in the future. But it's something that we do, it's actually something we use in the winter. It's, it's very important in the winter because when we have frozen ground situations and we're trying to break up to get down to a possible grave digging site or into a water main break. This is pretty important for us, so.
Any questions for Jeff? Yes, jury, go ahead.
Um, so Jeff, this, this goes on the backhoe?
Yes, yep. Okay. Attachment on the end of the backhoe.
What happened? Is the old one trash?
Yeah, like I was saying, it, the old one, we can't, they, they can't repair. Um, we took them in to get repaired and they can't get parts for it anymore.
Okay, very good. It does say that in the memo.
Yep.
Um, so this, is this budgeted at this time?
No, I'm reallocating some, uh, some funds that we had used in 2020 for some equipment purchases. I'm reallocating that to, uh, put towards this instead.
Okay, thank you. I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I think we have a motion.
Okay.
Any further questions on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, thank you. Item E, this is discussion of possible action regarding miscellaneous HVAC repairs, uh, for Kaiser Park in Village Hall. Uh, we recommended motion to approve the purchase and installation from Staley Plumbing of HVAC repairs, including $3,950 for a new furnace at the Kaiser Park building and $2,947 for a new steam coil at Village Hall. Would someone like to make that, that motion, please? All right, motion by Glish, second by Stitch, thank you. All right, questions on these two items? All right, if not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
You.
All right, item F, discussion of possible action regarding Village Hall Elevator Service Contract. Uh, we have a recommended motion to approve the proposal AP sixty-six fifty from Otis Elevator Company for lubricate and survey service on the Village Hall elevator, as long as the village has the option to opt out of the contract if we cease operations in this building. All right, would someone like to make that motion, please? Motion by Glish, thank you, second. Second by Stitch, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Just real quickly, yeah, I mean, we, we have to, uh, you know, the service contracts are pretty normal. Uh, when I was looking at the service contract and it's always kind of bugged me. Um, I seemed very high and so I, I, I brought this up with them this last year. And they, they have a kind of a scaled down approach for a service contract because, because we've been, we've been with them for a long time. But, uh, scaled down approach, which is only kind of a lubricate and survey approach, uh, where they come out and they check, make sure the, uh, lubricate all the important parts. They just take a look at it and if there's something wrong, then we would obviously have to pay for repair. My only concern was, is entering into a five-year contract, I, I did strike the, the automatic renewal. I don't like automatic renewals. And, uh, and then I also added the language that said, you know, we can opt out if we stop using this facility. I just didn't want to be in a contract for, held if we decide to tear the building down in three years or whenever. And, uh, and so, yeah, that would be, that's the motion for that.
Gotcha. Yes, Randy.
Jeff, does, does the elevator break down very often?
Only when board members ask if that.
No, does it?
No, it has not. No, we've had, we've had, um, you know, the only, in my tenure in the last five and a half years, we've not had breakdowns. We've had some issues with some water in the pit that we took care of and um, we've added some safety features like the doors and the, the phone or, uh, infrared sensors on the door and, and then a safety phone.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions on this one? Yes, Jerry?
Yeah, that's, you know, that sounds like a great idea, Jeff. I commend you on, on doing that. And it sounds like something you'll be able to just keep in effect going forward.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I don't, this, that's such a low use item, isn't it?
The, the elevator. You'd be, you'd be surprised how many people use the elevator to get to our second floor.
Okay.
Well, not, not nowadays, but, uh, pre-COVID, absolutely, it was used quite a bit.
Okay.
Mostly by Mike.
It got used on election day too, I might add, quite a bit.
It's also handy if you have a lot of boxes to get up to the, the second floor to use the elevator.
Correct.
I've done that for the chamber. All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, I am G. We have a discussion on possible action regarding speed and traffic analysis of the Foxfield and Lincoln Roads. We have a recommended motion to approve the task order from SRF Consulting in the amount of $6,000 for traffic study analysis for Lincoln Road and Foxfield Road. Jeff, do you want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, I would like to then, um, if there's any questions, we, I know we also have the engineer on, um, on the line as well. But, you know, one of the things that, as we were working on Lincoln Road, there were a few questions brought up to us on, on speed and, and what should be the speed out there and where it should change. And because we've also have a new junction with Bryn Hill Drive. Um, and it's wider, it's freshly paved. I think the Oregon PD has been doing a fantastic job out there. I know they've been doing a lot of speed enforcement out in that area, but, but we continue to get a lot of the concerns really deal with the residential areas on the, the more of the eastern side of the roadway. So, uh, that's one of those, anytime you make improvements, you're going to have something happen, you're going to have kind of a additional concern. And then we've anticipated the concern that was brought up by the resident, um, who lived on Foxfield at the last meeting. You know, we, we made that connection or the, the developer made. You know, we, we made that connection, or the, the developer made that connection on Autumn Ridge development for Foxfield connection to County Highway M M at Wolf Street. And, you know, we anticipated some concerns with speed and some possible, always a desire to add stop signs and that type of thing. And so actually, prior to that meeting last week, I'd already asked S R F to kind of prepare a task order that I would bring to the board at a future meeting. To just kind of take a look at these two areas, offer if there's any traffic recommendations that they would make for these, including the specific request of stop controlled at Liliana and Foxfield. I do wanna say that I, I, I would ask your support that stop controlled intersections are not necessarily the best control for controlling speed. They, they will bring cars to a stop, but they bring a lot of noise and they tend to have people that accelerate away from them fast. They're not typically used as a speed control measure. But S R F will be able to brief us all on that, but they've prepared these, this, this task order. And I had to modify it a little bit, and so that we could add the Foxfield type of stuff. So, that's what we've got going here.
Excellent. Questions from board members on this item? Yes, Amanda?
Yeah, I just noticed on the first page of the, actually, if, at least if you scrolled on to the next one, under number two, for the scope of, of services, it says that the council be conducted on a Tuesday through Thursday while school is in session. And I was wondering if that language was just a holdover from pre-COVID days, or if that really makes a, a difference. Cause kids are studying at home mostly, so.
Uh, Amanda, first of all, my name is Lee Gibbs, I'm with S R F. Pleasure to meet you and thank you all for the time here. The answer is both. It is a bit of a holdover to, typically when traffic data is collected. The engineer technician wants to collect traffic data when traffic patterns are normalized, which typically, for, if you think of the seven days of the week, is typically Tuesday through Thursday. Mondays and Fridays can have a little bit of a differing pattern, for example, particularly Fridays, you know, instead of coming from work directly to your, to your home, maybe you have to go do shopping or do other errands. So we typically try to avoid the, the adjacent days next to the weekend. So Tuesday through Thursdays are typically the best times, or best days of the week, rather, that traffic data is collected, because typically Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for the most part, you're, you're doing normal prac, practices and processes as, as you travel about work to home or other, or normal things that you're doing. You're not jamming three or four different errands before you get home. It, it's typically the, the best time to, to collect this data.
So do you think that out, the outcome of whatever traffic studies you do would be significantly altered once things quote-unquote get back to normal?
Um, I don't think so, particularly with speed studies, because a lot of how we as individuals drive on roads is based on how comfortable we are driving on that road. The environment around us. Do we feel alerted to presence of pedestrians or bikes or other vehicles? Those types of environmental factors will play way more heavily on how fast we go on, on a road than than like the, the COVID conditions now. These roadways are typically lower of volume, like for example, if we did Wolf Street or Janesville Street, those roads' speeds can be a, a car in front of you, you can't pass that car in front of you. So typically, your, your speeds are somewhat kept down because of a car in front of you controlling your speed. But on these lower volume roadways, typically you're not following another car, so you're kind of at the freedom to, to travel how over fast you feel comfortable doing. So, I think collecting at this time is still indicative of how people would typically drive. I would say, you know, one thing that can play a factor in environmental is weather. So a, as we say this on November sixteenth, hopefully we can collect data sooner than later. So we avoid things like snow, snow plows and other things that could damage equipment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, board members? Would someone like to make a motion then to approve this task order? Motion by Jacobson, that's, I'm sorry, who was the second? Peterson, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Lee.
Thank you, Lee. All right, item H, we have a discussion on possible action regarding the revised use of force policy. Chief, would you like to walk us through this a little bit?
Yes, thank you. Um, just recently, November ninth, I received a letter. There, it was still up in the air who the state agency would be to help facilitate the executive order on safe policing for safe communities. And for a while there, it was understood it could be Wiley Egg, and finally, they made that decision to move forward with Wiley Egg. Obviously, most of you recognize Wiley Egg, that is who we're accredited through. So for us, this is a pretty easy transition. They're asking that we make sure we are, we have these two, and you'll see them in the packet, the bullets. The first is that the state or local law enforcement agencies use of force policies adhere to all applicable federal, state and local laws. For, for us, again, that's a very easy checkoff because we're accredited, so that is part of the standard for accreditation. The second one, the state or local agencies' use of force policies must prohibit the use of chokeholds except in situations where deadly force is allowed by law. That was not in our policy. Someone asked why, and it's, this answer is simply, it's, we don't train on it in Wisconsin, unless it would be a deadly force situation. So, and of course, any maneuver would be okay to encounter a deadly force situation. So, what I'm asking the village board to consider is and approve is the pretty minor changes I've made to our use of force policy to adhere to this executive order on safe policing for safe communities. And that's first, I defined what a chokehold was, so it's clear to everyone in case there's any confusion.
Yep.
And then secondly, just very simply put, chokeholds are prohibited. Except in those situations where deadly force is allowed by law. If the board chooses to approve this, we will immediately move forward with this as a policy. And I will then submit our policy for certification to Wiley Egg. And of course, inform Mike of that as it occurs.
Thank you, Chief.
I, I wasn't gonna go into a lot of the state and local law enforcement, or the federal and state local laws that it's supposed to meet, but if village board would like me to, I can certainly expand upon that as well.
All right, if someone may feels comfortable making a motion to approve the use of force policy, someone wants to make that motion at this point and we can keep talking. Motion by Jacobson, is there a second? Second by Stitch, thank you. All right, what questions or comments do you have for the chief? Looks like we explained that pretty well. We read it in the packet. All right, all those in favor of the motion to, for the revised use of force policy, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I am eleven, report of committees, this is the Planning Commission from the November twelfth, twenty twenty meeting. First one is an FYI only, there's a site plan revision to the Oregon Optimists splash pad at the Oregon Pool. So it's well received by the, the Planning Commission. So you want to take a look at that at your leisure. The second is something that we need to act on. This is an extraterritorial jurisdiction certified survey map, C S M for the Connie Weber property on Tipperary Road in the town of Oregon. The Planning Commission is recommending that we approve the C S M for that property Antiparry Road, which is in the town of Oregon. Anyone like to make that motion, please? Oh, I'll go ahead and make that motion since I'm bringing it forward. Someone like to second, second by Jacobson, thank you. Any comments or questions on this one? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, opposed, motion carries. And then the third one is FYI only. The folks who run the Oregon Ice Arena brought forward a conceptual discussion for expansion. During the course of the discussion, they had some further ideas. So what we have here is probably a little bit of date, but essentially what they want to do is add add space to the Ice Arena building for indoor gymnasiums, indoor sporting, some retail area, but they are still in the planning stages for that. So they basically just wanna come to the Planning Commission and make sure there'd be no opposition to an expansion. And the Plan Commission said, you know, bring us, bring us your plans. So we'll see if they bring anything forward. All right, and then I'm twelve minutes that requiring action. We have some minutes from the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Commission from October first, twenty twenty meeting, and some information there. And then we also have the library, a minute from the Library Board Meeting on October fourteenth of twenty twenty. Any questions from any board members in either of those things? All right, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business, we have some future agenda items on the schedule there. We are not going into closed session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so all those in favor of adjourning say aye.
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 All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate you.
All right, yep, thank you.
All right, see you later.